Good evening and welcome to City Council meeting on May 26, 2020. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Again, this meeting is being conducted according to Emergency Directive 006, which was extended by Directive 016 and 018. So the public is not present. There have been notifications made with the agenda for people to mail comments in. We will also announce a phone number during the public comment periods that people can call. At this time, we'll begin with an invocation. We're not able to do that, obviously, so I would just ask everyone to recall yesterday was Memorial Day and a very solemn day in our country. And we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did we have any public announcements?
No, because they can't be here to sign anything.
We will then move to our first public comment period. Again, people have been advised that they can email their comments in if they would like. We also have a phone number available. That phone number is (702) 589-9629. Anyone wishing to make public comment may call that number now. The number again is (702) 589-9629.
Yes. Yes, good evening, Council. For the record, Fred Volt, the following comments relate to Item 8 on the evening's agenda. On two separate occasions, the City Council asked the City Manager and his staff for detailed explanations about proposed fiscal year '21 spending. Tonight's third version offers little illumination. While revenue estimates have been cut, no one knows whether those cuts will be sufficient to fit the uncharted and potentially lengthy future Boulder City faces in a shrunken economy. The proposed fiscal year '21 budget contains minimal spending cuts. We see no cuts to existing personnel's compensation, which makes up 60% of the operating budget. Staff has been mysteriously exempted from enduring any financial pain the rest of the community must shoulder. There should be no compensation increases for any existing employees. We see frivolous capital projects continued, such as the City Hall remodel, up by 50% to $1.5 million. Why do we need a deputy fire chief given the small size of our fire department? We have four major public fund sinkholes consisting of two golf courses overdue for designation as enterprise funds, so they must self-fund rather than rating the general fund, the airport, and an expensive municipal swimming pool used by relatively few residents. The City Manager wants over $10 million of new money for utility capital improvement projects when for the past year he can't account for over $20 million of previously approved and unspent projects. Use this existing money to fund proposed fiscal year '21 utility capital projects and make no new appropriations until existing appropriations are reconciled. The City Manager proposes we remove over $16.5 million from the general fund's ending balance to cover his fiscal year '20 overspending on consultants and other fancies and to make up the guestimated revenue spending gap for fiscal year '21. This leaves just under $3.4 million at general fund ending balances. Thus fiscal year '22 will require massive spending cuts. Better to start cutting now to ease the pain on all concerned. Those responsible for supposedly shepherding the reductions are doing just the opposite in their personal budgets. The City Manager wants to increase his budget by over 24% from fiscal year '19 to fiscal year '21. The Finance Director has increased several line items in her budget from over 84% to over 333%. For a Finance Director to publicly state she won't question $500 of spending suggests a cavalier attitude toward other people's money. There are additional wasteful examples across almost every city department. Bottom line, staff refuse to act as though tough times are ahead. There is no white knight ready to save our city from financial hardship. Given the state's own financial woes, it may keep funds that would ordinarily flow to local government, worsening our plight. While we do have RTC funding for Railroad Road paralleling Boulder City Parkway, how certain is it that the state will even partially fund the new railroad museum? Can we count on the RTC to continue fixing our streets when bus ridership has declined, sales tax revenue will decline, and there are higher priority road projects in the Las Vegas Valley needing shrinking money? Nowhere do we see the City Manager reviewing his operations and pruning. The City Clerk's office provides a perfect example. Despite the local post office handling U.S. passport applications one block from City Hall, the City Clerk and her staff duplicate this function, wasting time that could be spent digitizing records and efficiently running the City Clerk's office without paying for over $17,000 of temporary staffing on top of four full-time staff. Since the City Manager has refused to propose spending cuts, so Boulder City responsibly balances its budgets, it would behoove the Council to reduce or line item veto expenses we can ill afford under our new economic climate. I would ask that these comments be added verbatim to the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we pause for a moment? The livestream went down.
Okay. Due to a technical issue, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We will start at a little after, well, it'll be about 7:15. We will restart. Thank you.
It says it's a server error. Well...
Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. You're out, Mayor.
All right. We've had some technical issues here for the last 30 minutes. I do want someone to be able to verify that audio and video are available from the city website, if we can do that.
Rock verified.
I'm looking at it right here. It is going fairly slow, but it is on there.
And the audio is clear?
No.
Apparently, the off-site IT company has had some failures. We're attempting to transmit this in a different way.
Audio verified.
Okay. So everything's clear then?
Yes.
All right. We were in public comment. I know that Mr. Volt had called in. I'm not sure where we may have lost the feed during his comments. He did ask that his comments be included verbatim. I believe we do have that recorded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So we are still in public comment. The phone number to call is area code (702) 589-9629. Anyone wishing to speak on an item on the agenda? The phone number is (702) 589-9629. And I do want to make note that we do have Councilmember Hoskins is participating in the meeting via a call-in by telephone. Madam City Clerk, did we have any mailed-in comments?
Yes, Mayor, we had one.
Would you go ahead and read that, please?
Yes, the comment is from Georgia Wenzel. It's regarding the Lendahand item. She states, "On behalf of the Board of Directors of Lendahand of Boulder City, I would like to express our sincere thanks to Boulder City's Council and staff for the ongoing support to our organization, especially the CDBG grant." And that was all the written comments that were provided.
Thank you. Again, we are still in public comment. Anyone wishing to speak in public comment? Again, the phone number is (702) 589-9629. And while we're waiting, I would ask the City Attorney, Mr. Morris, if you could come into council chambers. All right. Hearing no others for public comment, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And Mr. City Attorney, my question is, we had approximately a 30-minute delay from the start of the meeting when we first encountered technical issues. I'm concerned that we've not had any other callers for public comment besides the one initial caller. My concern is whether we're doing the proper procedures here in meeting the open meeting law by having to restart this, potentially having people that are not able to view the livestream of the meeting.
Yes, Mayor, is... My opinion is, as long as the link that we've provided on the agenda links up to the live feed, then we would be okay. And so on the amended agenda, it provides a link where the public may view, and as long as that connects them in through Facebook, then in that regard, I think we would be okay.
And again, my concern is because the link has been redirected. If anybody had started viewing it from the initial link, whether that link would then automatically switch over, or if there are some folks still not getting any signal at all.
I have no comments.
Yeah, that's a technical question that...
The video is playing on the...
If you'd go ahead and state your name and your position.
Sorry, I'm not in this. Hello, my name is Ben Jurick. I'm with the... I'm an IT support technician for the city of Boulder City. Currently, we are using the same URL. We are just embedding a video from a different source. So the link provided is going to the video that's being broadcast right now. I want to ask for a small recess really quick because right now we're experiencing an issue with what's being displayed is being mirrored, so all like letters and numbers are in reverse. People are, of course, observable, but if I could... We get a small recess really quick, so I could try and adjust that, then we could get back to broadcasting as normal.
Okay. How long do you think that will take?
Just a few minutes. I just have to flip the phone around.
10 minutes? 5 minutes?
10 minutes, sir.
Okay. We will then reconvene at 8:00 PM. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Looks like we, again, have the feed going out. Mr. City Attorney, again, we've now sustained another delay in this and another change in the Universal Resource Locator.
It appears we're back at our original link from what I've been told, so my opinion is, Mayor, that it would be okay to proceed with the meeting. It's not uncommon that we have public comment for sometimes an extended time period. Certainly, the phone number for the public comment has been published and verbally provided to the public by the mayor. So I... It'd be my opinion that we could go ahead and proceed with this meeting without any violation.
All right. Thank you. We did complete... Well, we've closed the initial public comment period, so at this point, we will move to the consideration of the consent agenda.
I believe the regular agenda.
Excuse me. Yes, the regular agenda.
Yes, Mayor, we are asking to remove Item Numbers 5 and 6, please.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes, Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council then. Any comments, other changes on the regular agenda?
No changes.
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can entertain a motion then for approval with changes?
Motion to approve with changes.
Thank you.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right. That will then bring us to the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes? Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Thank you. Council, any changes on the consent agenda? Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I would like to move Item 2, actually, just 2B. Can I move just 2B, or do we have to move all of 2? I would like to move Item 2B to the regular agenda, please.
Any other changes?
No changes, Mayor.
Councilmember Hoskins?
No changes.
Okay. I'm requesting Item Number 4 be moved to the regular agenda. So we have two proposed changes here. Item 2B, which is Resolution... Consideration of Resolution 7104, and Item Number 4, which is Consideration of Resolution 7107. I'll go ahead and move for approval with those changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's unanimous. That would then bring us to Item Number 2B.
Yes, I would like...
Let's have Mr. Mays, I believe, give us a short description of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Yes, this item is related to community development block grant funds. So Resolution Number 7104 is to approve an interlocal agreement between the city and with emergency aid, so that emergency aid would receive approximately $25,641 in community development block grant funding for fiscal year '20. I can answer any questions.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I would like to disclose a relationship with emergency aid as their grant writer and will abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins?
No comments.
Okay. Indicated no comments. At this point then, it'd be time if someone would like to make a motion regarding Resolution 7104.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 71... Sorry, I don't remember. 7104.
Oh.
Hey, Councilmember Hoskins was the one on the microphone and seconded the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That would then... Thank you, Mr. Mays. That would then bring us to Item Number 4. Mr. Latrell with Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Keegan Latrell, Public Works Director. Item before you today is the Second Amendment to an agreement with Western Area Power Administration, or WAPA, for our BCTAP project. The original agreement with WAPA was approved back in April of 2018. There was another... For $123,000, there was an Amendment 1, which consisted of about $26,000. And now the one before you is for an additional $80,000, bringing the total to $230,000. In this amendment, they're adding some project administration costs that was overlooked through the First Agreement or the First Amendment. They're also including some testing inspection and also some equipment, new relays, anunciator meters, and other appurtenances. There is available funds in this project budget, so no budget amendment is needed. If this is approved, there'll be approximately $88,000 left in the project budget. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. The reason I'd ask this to be moved is this particular project, and I know that the beginnings of this project predated your employment here as Public Works Director. What is WAPA?
They are the power source that we tie into.
That's Western Area Power Administration?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And they essentially manage the power that comes to Boulder City. Is that correct?
Yeah, so they pretty much have all the control. When they came back with this agreement or this amendment, staff reviewed it. We're... The equipment and the other stuff that they wanted to add to it, we agreed with. It is much needed. It is going to improve the reliability. But for the admin inspection and testing costs, that's just something that they requested.
Okay. And this project, this BCTAP project, how essential is that to the city?
Very essential. It... Well, I'll back up a step. We're doing... We already completed the below grade to tie in the transformer. Everybody is well aware of the transformer that was sitting out there. We're just about to finish the above-grade work, which ties in the transformer. That should be online next month. It's already been tested. Everything's good. And then we have another project that's moving forward that will replace all the power along Adams down Buchanan. And then we also have our 69-kV loop that ties into this same area that loops the power around, basically giving us a loop system so we won't be without power.
So the purpose of it is to provide redundancy with... Not just for one area, but for the entire city?
Yeah, I think it's... With the 69-kV loop project, I think it's 60% of the population.
Okay. And currently, we have one main feed that comes up from what we always used to call the inner tie, the meat substation.
Yes, sir.
And that's also managed by WAPA?
I believe so.
Again, as I say, the reason I wanted to bring this for public discussion, this project, the transformer, had been purchased a couple of years ago. It did sit there for a very long time with no wires going to it.
Yep.
So the expected time online then is about a month from now?
Yeah, next month is... It should be tied in. Well, actually, it's tied in right now. They're just finishing up some minor things. This additional $80,000, we'll finish that out. The transformer that you're talking about, I was told that we purchased it years ago because we got such a great deal on it, knowing that it was going to sit for a couple of years. That's why we were offered a five-year warranty on it, just in case... That's why we were offered a five-year warranty on it, just in case there's anything that's happened to it. And we've had a couple of minor leaks with it, and the companies came out and fixed it almost immediately. So they just inspected it, I believe, two weeks ago, and everything approved through WAPA's regulations and through the transformer company.
And when did the clock start ticking on the five-year warranty? Because I've heard two versions. One, it started when we purchased it. The other is it starts when it goes live.
I believe it's when we purchased it. I can double-check on that, though.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
We kind of discussed.
Counselmember Adams?
Yes, thank you. We discussed this a little bit during my briefing, but I remember there was concern last year with setting up the tap, or the transformer, at the time, because we were entering into the hot summer months and we weren't certain of the reliability. But obviously, as people know, it is getting hot relatively quickly here. We don't have those same concerns now at this time. Could you cover that with us?
No, the testing and the switchover, they've already, they've already performed all of that. So I don't know all the ins and outs of getting it switched over, but it's essentially like switching a switch at this point, because they do have it all wired and tested.
All right. So yeah, there is no concern that at this time, then, so that it can be reliable as we go into the summer months?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Counselmember Hoskins?
No, no remorse.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you, Mr. Luttrell. I will go ahead and move for approval then of resolution 7107.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Items five and six have been removed. That brings us then to item number seven, introduction of bill number 1877. Anyone wishing to make the bill introduction?
I'd like to introduce bill 1877 and waive reading except for titles.
Thank you.
Bill number 1877, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title I, Chapter nine of the City Code, Financial Administration, by amending section 1-9-9 to update general fund, unassigned fund balance, and the minimum operating reserves and other operating funds of the city. Bill number 1877 will be considered at the June 9 regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to item number eight. This is a public hearing for possible actions, matters pertaining to fiscal year 2020 to 2021 tentative and final budget.
Diane, just go turn the thing on. Okay. Thank you.
It must be the final budget with all of that in your arms.
Yes.
And someone else with more in her arms.
Good evening. I'm Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director, and I'm glad we're at this point in the agenda. I was starting to get worried. We need a public hearing tonight. So the, this is the agenda item number eight, which is actions pertaining to the 2021 budget. And we have a PowerPoint presentation, and then when we're done going through the items, then I guess a public hearing will take place. So, turn this on.
Top left, slide it on.
Okay. And I know you're all familiar with this first slide, but I think it's important to go through all the steps we took to get to the point of tonight. So in January and February, we met with the department directors. The finance director, myself, and the budget manager met with all the department directors to go through their budget. And then there's three areas. February 12th and March 11th were city council work sessions, where we presented to the city council and took directions from you. On February 24th, there was a staff-led citizen workshop to review the budget. On April 15th, we filed a tentative budget with the city clerk, Clark County Clerk and Controller, and Nevada Department of Taxation. And, excuse me, on April 22nd, we had the third work session to review the final budget. And all these things were scheduled meetings, but while all this was going on, Nevada shut down and COVID-19 happened. So while the first half of the budget process was pretty much normal, then everything just went crazy. So going back to the schedule, we had a March 17 meeting with the department directors and asked them to reduce their budgets by 10 and 20%. And we wanted to see what we would need to use of those cuts, but we had them go through the exercise of cutting their budgets. Those March 17 cuts, $2.3 million, which was included in the April 22 budget review we did with the council. So after that, we still didn't feel like we had enough cuts. So on May 6, we met with the directors and cut an additional $800,000. And we did send a summary of all those May 6 cuts to the council. So you received that on May 12. So you have received all of the changes that have gone on with this budget through the normal first half and then the COVID-19 second half. So we did the, published the notice of the public hearing, which is tonight, and we have to have a budget, should be adopted before June 1, with the idea of mailing the final budget and the affidavit of publication to the Nevada Department of Taxation by June 1. This afternoon, before I go on with the PowerPoint, I did receive a letter from Kelly Langley, who is the supervisor of the Division of Local Government Services. She finds that our budget is in compliance with applicable statutes and regulations. So we just received that this afternoon. Just wanted to let you know that. So we all know about the COVID-19 pandemic, and that was just 70 short days ago, which kind of seems like a long time ago, but 70 days ago. Okay. So I think we've just kind of gone through that. On March 20, the governor ordered all nonessential businesses to close until April 16, and then on April 1, he extended it to April 30. And we've adjusted all of our revenue projections using information that we've received from Applied Analysis, who is providing projections to all the cities and counties in the state. So we're, we feel like we're doing the proper thing by using those estimates, even though our situation's a little different with the solar revenues. I don't think we're in as dire a situation, but I believe it's better to expect the worst and hope for the best. So that's how we've created this budget. And we've done a few things internally. We've created a tracking system within our financial software to track all of the COVID-19 related expenses. So we're capturing everything that's happened related to COVID-19. We've issued, we've created state of emergency purchasing procedures, and this would ensure that we capture everything related that can be reimbursable and that we also are scrutinizing every purchase. Double eyes are looking at every purchase and questioning everything. As I said, I don't expect Christmas cards this year from anyone. So I'd like to turn it over to the city manager right now, so he can make a few comments.
Honorable members of council, I'd just like to limit my comments to what have we done since the start of the COVID-19? I can tell you that I feel like I'm going through post-traumatic stress yet again. It seems like a few short years ago that we did the Great Recession, and this one seems to almost eclipse that as well. So starting as soon as we realized that COVID-19 was going to have a significant financial impact to all government agencies, we started putting into policies, items that would assist us in managing not only the current year, but also start getting ready for this next fiscal year in terms of reducing the overall expenditures as much as we can, realizing that there may be a substantial decrease in revenues, particularly the seat tax revenues that come to the city. So as you can see from the slide presentation, you can see that our safety of public, or our safety of the public and the staff still remains our number-one priority, not only this budget year, but also going into the next fiscal year. Some of the policies that we put into place is that all nonessential travel and training has halted as of March 15 until further notice, and it's likely going to continue all the way through next fiscal year as well. All vacant positions that existed as of March 15, funding was removed from that during this current fiscal year, and those positions will continue to be unfunded in the next fiscal year. And any vacancies that do occur between now and the next fiscal year, those also will be automatically frozen unless we go through a series of steps. And these are administrative steps that I put in, in order for the council to feel comfortable that any possible positions that we may be recommending to be filled is because there is a critical need for that particular position. As you can see there, justification by the department chair must come to a critical, a critical committee that will review that request. They will make recommendations to me. I will take a look at that, and then based on those recommendations and my review, if I feel that that position warrants, you know, moving forward, then we will bring that position request to the council for request of funding, funding of that particular position. We continue as of March 15 and today and going into the future to review and prioritize not only overtime expenditures, but anything related to organization, the way that we're set up, the structure, and if there's another way of doing business that yet will produce the same results, if not better, but do it in a more efficient way, we will be looking at those options as well. General fund departmental budgets have up until this point been reduced by about $2.3 million. We have gone through, we have slashed equipment that was projected for replacement. We've really cut supplies back substantially. And again, as I mentioned in this, in the previous slide, that travel and training has been reduced substantially. We have left some travel and training capacity in there, but really that has to do with ongoing training needs, particularly for individuals that have certifications and whatnot, in order for them to continue to get their continuing education paid for so that they can maintain their certifications. As you, the council, are aware, we will have a legislative session this year. Hopefully, we don't have to travel, but that may be a necessity. We're hoping that they will do a lot of it here from the Grant Sawyer Building, so that it minimizes the need to actually travel. We've also reviewed all of our contractual obligations that we have citywide. We were able to look at a few of those and make some cuts as appropriate. We've also examined the potential for revenues, opportunities for revenue increases. We started looking at the fee structures of what we charge for a multitude of different things, but felt that currently, because of the situation, not only are we receiving less revenues, but also it affects those that are looking for either to increase potentially their business opportunities, you know, that maybe right now may not be the time, but we may be looking into the next fiscal year about how we might be able to increase those revenues if need be. And then finally, you did hear the finance director talk about the additional reductions that were made to the operations and maintenance budget, about $815,000, of which those items were actually removed. Those monies were removed from the individual budget line items, but they're being transferred into the contingency fund, so that they're available that should there be a need. Say, for example, you know, we have to pay for our jail services, and if we go over that budget, we have to continue to pay for that because we're obligated to do that. So we have to have a pot of money where we can go. Because if no new revenues come in next year, then we can't augment the budget, because the only way to augment is based on new, unanticipated revenues. The other thing I wanted to show you, and also the public, to kind of understand a little bit more about the general fund and how it is set up, is you really look at a big pie and you look at it in three uneven slices. So you have the larger slice that comprises salaries and benefits. That's about 60% of the general fund budget today. Then the next slice is the contract slides, which represents somewhere in the close range of about 16% of our budget. And then finally, we call it miscellaneous operating. That's where we pay for, the city does have to pay for its water. The city does have to pay for its electricity, all of our utilities. And then a number of other things that are paid for out of there, supplies, asphalt, fencing, whatever it is that we need in order to manage and maintain the city, that comes out of that. You know, we call that discretionary, but you know, sometimes you wonder, is it really discretionary to keep the lights on or not? So most of the cuts that you have seen throughout the budget are actually coming out discretionary, which actually represents the smallest piece of that overall budget now, today. As we move forward, if any positions become available, then the larger piece, which currently today, and as you see in this slice, where salaries and benefits is 1.81 million, those are the salary savings of the current vacancies that are being held vacant. That's what the impact is to the salaries and benefits. As additional positions may become vacant, say somebody decides to retire, we decide that we don't need to fill that position, then those savings then would go in and increase that particular area. The second one is, you can see, contract cuts is about $367,000, and then miscellaneous operating cuts is about $630,000. So I just wanted to, again, emphasize that as much as the cuts as we'd like to make, you know, even larger, is in order to do that, we really have to affect the largest piece of the pie, and that's salaries and benefits. So that would be the next place that we would need to go to, because if we buy no supplies, if we buy no paper, if we buy no asphalt, you know, none of those things, then we have a lot of individuals that are going to be standing by and not being able to work, because we need those supplies in order for them to be able to affect their jobs. So with that, just wanted to finally say some other policies that have been put in effect, is that all city-funded capital projects for this next fiscal year, I am placing those on hold until at least January of 2021. At that time, the council will receive the mid-year budget review, in which we will be able to now have some data that shows what exactly is the impact of the revenue streams that we rely on in order to fund all of the expenditures. By then, we should be able to have a much better picture as to what that negative impact is, and then start planning accordingly. So at this point, you know, based on how the council approaches the approval of the budget tonight, is if you approve the capital improvement plan as it's been provided, it's my intent to put all of those projects on hold for the first six months, or until you receive that particular presentation of the budget, and we have a good understanding of what that picture looks like in terms of revenues that are actually received. Secondly, the general funding for special projects has already been reduced, about almost $1.5 million. As you recall, during your budget workshops, there was a request to delay or actually take out the $1 million for City Hall. That's part of this one point, almost $5 million. And then finally, all budgets will be carefully monitored throughout the year and adjusted as new projections are available. So again, as we start receiving information about, you know, the revenues that we are receiving, if they're higher than lower from where our projections are, we will be sharing that with the council, so that you have the information just as quickly as we do, to make sure that we're following and monitoring the progress of the impact of the loss of revenues. You know, it's my hopes and desires that, obviously, that we minimize that and that perhaps maybe there might be some silver lining in the future. perhaps maybe there might be some silver lining in the future by the federal government potentially providing some relief for revenue losses to state and local governments. And if that does occur, then obviously that helps us in terms of closing the gap of the lost revenues that we have projected for next fiscal year, which is the most conservative number that we have put out there, as you recall, is about $9.1 million loss of revenues. So with that, I'll turn this back over to the staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Bryce Boldt, Administrative Services Officer or Director. And the next two slides are HR related. You'll see later a resolution with establishing job classifications and associated salary ranges. We've got 1.8 full-time equivalents added this year, and that would be our full-time animal control officer, and then a part-time, which is currently less, 19 or less hours, will go up to 32 hours. And we also are going to have a salary, general salary adjustment for all employees, including part-time. And then the deputy fire chief is the, the only open and funded position, otherwise all the other ones were frozen. And I think it's Angela.
Hi, Angela Mannan, Budget Manager. Since our last meeting on April 22nd, there was a slight adjustment in revenues, there's an increase of about $53,000, that's because we reevaluated property taxes and also room taxes, so we adjusted property taxes up and room tax down. Our workers' comp calculations came in, and they're higher than we originally budgeted, so just in the general fund, we'll be paying an extra $100,000 than we originally had in the budget. And also our liability insurance increased 10%, and our contingency increased to $804,000. So decreases since our last meeting were total expense decreases of $958,000, and that's including the city manager's cuts he discussed of about $800,000. It also includes the building official position was removed because the contractor, because of the situation, agreed to stay another year, so that saved the city about $65,000. And also those two RDA positions changed their portions that were being funded by the general fund. The transfers out decreased by $583,000. $388,000 is for special projects, so some of the capital projects that were going to be funded from the general fund were canceled at this, as of right now. So with those increases I talked about earlier with the workers' comp and our liability insurance increases, the net decrease was $737,000. So since our original budget, some things have changed. So with the funding of the five new funds, it's about $8 million transferring out of the general fund. Special projects reduced from 3.3 million to 1.8 million, and that was the adjustments the city manager discussed a second ago. And also our operating maintenance expense decreased to 38, 32.8 million from 35.1 million. So that's our changes we've made since our original budget back in March and February. Net overall budget decrease for operating and maintenance and special projects is 3.8 million. So since March, when our original budget that we presented to you guys, it's been reduced 3.8 million, and that original budget was about $38 million. So since the beginning, we've cut the budget 10% across the board for general fund. The proprietary changes, so we are expecting a very large revenue loss for the airport, but luckily we have the CARES grant to help mitigate it. Total utilities is a reduction in expenses of $150,000, and that's with increasing capital improvement projects by $655,000. So just like the general fund budget was cut with maintenance and has the hiring phases, same with utilities. And just like the general fund, the increase in workers' comp and our liability insurance increased for both of those as well. And unless anyone has any questions, I will get Carol, the CIP coordinator.
Okay, the CIP changes since a special meeting that was held on March 11th, the removal of the general fund City Hall improvements project, and the five projects were removed from the general fund special projects plan, based on reductions implemented for the forecasted revenue loss due to COVID. Changes to the utility CIP plan are the result of the completion of various studies, one for the water and sewer study, one for the drone study for the power poles, that produce short-term and long-term infrastructure project directions. In electric, the circuit 63, 64 tie, they spread that project to fiscal year '21 and '22. The underground cable replacement, the total project was reduced, and it was moved from '24 to '21. The pole, the project that was added is the pole replacement program, added the new project based on the drone study with the funding in '21 and '22. The water, based on the study by the consultants, a more effective and efficient short-term and long-term CIP plan was formed. The addition of a project for the eight-inch butterfly valve replacement, that added the new project based on the consultant's study, and the funding is spread over fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '25. The total project is $880,000. Sewer, based on the consultants, a more efficient, again, short-term and long-term CIP plan was formed. We had the manhole project, but it expanded the project to include fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '23, and the landfill had no material changes. So is there any questions or?
We'll wait till the presentation's complete. Thank you.
Well, that, that does conclude the presentation for the budget hearing, so if you want to ask questions now, or have the public call in, then ask questions, it's up to you.
All right. Before we begin the public hearing then, are there any questions by council? Councilmember Hoskins?
If you have any questions, I'd just like to make a statement. I think I'm getting some overtalk here.
I think we should do the public hearing first, and then we can get to any comments that council members may have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right then, don't, don't run away, we may have some other questions for you, so. But we will open the public hearing at this point. Again, anyone wishing to make comment regarding the budget issues, the phone number is 702-589-9629. And this is a public hearing on item number eight.
Public comment?
Yes, may I go ahead?
Yes, please.
Right. Yes, council, for the record again, this is Fred Boldt. I have three reactions to what I heard city staff have to say these last few minutes. The first is that the City Hall project has not been removed, it has only been moved to future projects, and it's still on the radar. And there was no mention that the increase in the project budget is 50% from 1 million to 1 and 1/2 million. That's a very important fact that I think there should have been a more forthright disclosure of. The second thing I wanted to say is that the cuts made so far are completely insufficient to close the funding chasm as we know it today, and are likely only to get worse, no matter what a consultant has to say to the other cities and counties of the state. And finally, there was a huge tap dance by the city manager around reducing existing staff compensation. There's no talk about changing the schedule that you're being asked to approve tonight, there's no talk about cuts in COLA increase, and there's no talk about cuts in the salaries and benefits of the existing people from the city manager on down to the most entry-level person. Thank you.
Thank you. Line is now available if anyone would like to make a comment during this public hearing. The phone number is 702-589-9629. All right, hearing no others, we will close the public hearing portion of this, and bring it back to council. Councilmember Hoskins, you had said you had a comment you would like to make?
Oh yes, my comment is that I'd like to see that the council be given consideration before anything is done with, such as the golf course tree removal of $70,000, irrigation of 1 million, this would take years to reflect any cost savings. New tennis court and the vet's park, $400,000. The permanent cart barns, $800,000. An additional break room at courthouse, $110,000, and the parkway furniture, $300,000. I would suggest that we consider health and safety issues, and the environment, and only the essential items, and all the non-essential items they put on hold. I'd like to have the council be part of any of these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Councilmember Folda?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions. I'm not sure which one of finance would answer this, but since our last meeting, as applied analysis, are they still projecting a 40% decrease to incoming revenue from taxes and sales?
Well, we're receiving information weekly from, from that source, and the latest information shows that it's, they're projecting it won't be quite as bad as what they initially projected. So I believe it's somewhere in the 29, 30% loss right now, but you know, that's, I think we're, we're safer leaving it where it is, but feeling at least a little bit more optimistic that hopefully it's not going to be as bad as that 40%.
Sorry, thank you. And also I think, I believe it was an 18-month recovery that they were projecting, is that still, or has that changed, do you know as well?
No, I believe that's still about 18 months.
Okay, okay. So, you know, so what, it's fair to say that what we're experiencing will happen into the next budget year as well, that we'll have additional budget cuts, probably needed to be made into the next fiscal year.
Well, we've got to deal with the upcoming year first, which I think we've got a good, a very conservative plan, but then as the, the year develops, then we'll keep the council informed, and yes, there may need to be adjustments in, in fiscal year '22.
So these next ones will probably be for the city manager. A lot of our cuts, so 10% across the board, we're still using, it's moved from about $17.3 to $16.5 million from our use of funds for this budget year. That's quite a bit of amount of money that we're using for our general fund this year. A lot of our cuts were put into a contingency fund. Can you discuss how that money would be used if needed? Would that just go through council, or be through city staff, or how would that money be decided?
If I am understanding your question correctly, the 16-plus million dollars that you see that would end up being transferred, the significant portion of that is somewhere around $8 million or so, would be transferred from the ending fund balance of the general fund to the special revenue funds that the council has already approved. So there'll be a substantial transfer, so it's, you know, it's coming out of the general fund ending fund balance, but it's also going right back into those funds that you've established. Additionally, the council did approve to, you know, for this next fiscal year, to close the gap of the potential revenue losses that we're anticipating by use of ending fund balance. And so that's what that figure represents. So the two together comes up close to about the $16 million that you're talking about. And I think part of that transfer as well, the third piece is the, the special revenue fund, or the, you know, what we sometimes call as capital fund, transfer those monies into that, that fund as well.
Okay. So some of these transfers or use of funds are not necessarily being used at this time, it's not spent money, but it is being put into savings in other locations?
That is correct. They're not being spent. What is occurring is that we created, the council approved creation of funds for very specific purposes, for example, extraordinary expense, revenue stabilization, you know, the likes of that, we have the risk management fund, so all of those funds, these, these funds would transfer into there, but they're not expected to be used with one exception, which is obviously if the revenues continue, you know, to go significantly less than what we have anticipated, then we would be looking to council to approve the use of revenue stabilization funds in order to shore up next fiscal year if, if that were to be needed.
Okay, thank you. So I just, for the public, it's very, the most of our general fund is staff, salary, and benefits, so there's really very little that could be really cut down, I mean, that's about, it's more than half, it's 60% about of our general fund. So at this point, what we have cut a lot from our budget, a big portion of our budget cannot be cut yet at this time. a big portion of our budget cannot be cut yet at this time.
That is correct, councilmember. It's really difficult to do that. If we had to go and do an additional 2, 3, 5 million dollars worth of cuts, I would have to recommend that we would have to, in effect, start looking at salaries and benefits because you just cannot cut the money to pay for the utilities of all of our infrastructure. And you know, you have to pay for that. And you know, so we'd have to go to the next pie, if you will, the next slice of pie that has not substantially been touched, and that would be salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you. So, and I know that staff will be closely keeping an eye on that as things change and as we have a better idea of how much will be affected. The last thing was the capital improvements. So I want to make sure I understand you correctly that any city-funded capital improvements will not be happening until January 1st of next, of 2021. At this time, those are being put on hold. And then we would reassess with council which ones are priority or not. So even though they might be listed as a project upcoming in 2021, we really won't, excuse me. I don't know, how do I say, so 20, yeah, it is considered 21. Those really won't be considered until next calendar year.
Again, my commitment and the policy that I've already shared with Public Works is that no projects will go forward unless it's deemed critical and we bring that project to the council to explain the criticality and the need to move forward at that time. If not, then we will not be pushing any of those projects forward. That is planned for next fiscal year, starting obviously July 1 of 20 through 30 June of 21. I would not be pushing those forward until such time that we have had the opportunity to have a mid-year budget review with the council because it actually would then give us a few months of, you know, real revenues that would show that, you know, whatever that impact is of the lost revenues that we've been projecting.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bridges?
Thank you very much. A couple of, first of all, comment. Congratulations. I just, what an incredibly Herculean task you had to go through all of the changes that were recommended at the beginning and then have to start, pull everything apart and start all over again. I just want to give you all a tremendous amount of credit for the amount of work you did. I guess I sort of have a question along the same line of capital improvement. And I understand fixed costs, I understand variable costs. And I understand that the idea of the capital improvement plan is it's a plan, it's a budget. It's saying that this is what we'd like to spend. And I'm really happy to hear that we're not going to go ahead and do these things until after January. And then also to evaluate the importance of them. And that by removing them, it's then very hard to go back later and say, you know, this is a really important thing for us to do, or we need to do this. And now it's not in the budget. And the fact that you move things out, spread them out across the five-year plan and the, trying to see if there was anything else that I had. And I also want to thank you very much today during my briefing for taking the time to explain where the numbers came from, where the numbers on that final budget, where they came from. And also wanted to understand that of those special funds, there is one that once the money is in there, it cannot, there are two?
Two.
Two that cannot be moved out once they're in there, they can't be used. But the others can in a pinch. I mean, it's certainly not something you want to keep moving the funds back and forth, but if necessary.
Correct. But if I could just state one thing about that. I mean, these funds are specific funds to assist the city in being able to run smoothly. And all of these set aside monies are for expenses that the city, it's inevitable, will incur compensated absences or vehicle replacements. So these are important funds that we need to have monies in. And the revenue stabilization fund is important, especially now. You know, we know what's going on with COVID. The biggest impact to cities is revenue loss. So you know, I guess we're a little late to the game because we approved these last September, but this is our first opportunity to fund them. But it's good that we're doing it now because things happen and you need to have reserves set aside in different funds to tackle these issues.
Now, are there caps to all these funds?
We have put caps, and Angela may have that information. I think it's like 10% fixed assets and...
Or 5% capital assets or 10% prior year expenditures.
Yeah. So yes, they have caps. They won't grow indefinitely.
Okay, and they're not capped out yet?
No, oh no. We're just starting to try to put money in.
Put money into those. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the finance department. You guys really did a great job in putting this all together. Thank you for taking the time with me this weekend. I know I had some questions then that we kind of went over some of this stuff. One of the things with regards to the contingency fund that we're wanting to go in with certain cuts, you know, obviously line item, you can see where that money would have been spent, obviously, but we're, you know, we're not sure if that money's wanting to be spent or maybe we can avoid having to. But we also don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we can't afford that. At what point does it become better to have this contingency fund set up where it's not necessarily determined where we might need it? Obviously, we're not going to know if there are, happen to be any shortfalls versus having those line items. I'm sorry if my words are being a little bit jumbled, but...
Okay, as for the contingency fund, the city has always had one and they've always had minimal amounts in there. And just because of the situation with this year, we have cut so many expenditures out of the budget. And I think I've said a few times that it's inevitable that something will happen sometime this year that we won't have money in the budget to fund. So the contingency is funded to the maximum right now, which is very unusual for us to have that much in there. But that is so, all these cuts that the city manager and myself and the budget manager made at 800,000, we put it there so that if something happens like, you know, tonight when the whole system went down, I'm like, oh my gosh, if we have to buy a new system, we don't have money for that. But that's where things like that would get paid out of that contingency. But they would, once this crisis is over, we expect the contingency to just be a minimal, just a token amount to use in case of something really unusual. Because with all our funds that we're creating too, that should help us out with a lot of unexpected expenses that will occur during the year. I hope that answers your question.
No, it does. And I know it wasn't worded the best, but I just, I wanted to be a little bit more clear with, in my head, about exactly where that money was going, why we want it to be there necessarily, so...
And that is off limits. I mean, the only time, the only way that can be used is if the city manager brings that information to the council.
Thank you very much. I guess, not to be a pessimist, right? I don't, I'm not saying that we need to be. But let's just say, right, we've already been very conservative, but even that wasn't good enough. What does that look like if we end up in that situation? What type of processes does the city have to go through? Should, you know, with all of our conservative estimates and trying to do this, where do we end up?
So if we needed to cut additional from what already has been projected in terms of revenue losses, then the next piece that I would have to obviously recommend for the council to consider is to go to the next, you know, basically untouched piece of the pie, which is salaries and benefits. That represents 60% of the general fund.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hoskins, any questions or comments? Are you there, Councilmember Hoskins?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Sorry. Yes, I have a comment or a question. The cost of printing seems to have gone up tremendously, and I'm sure there's a reason for that, and you can answer this. But I noticed the PWD engineering went from 220 actual in 2019 to $6,666 through May the 20th. I was just wondering what the reason is on that.
Could you say the project again? I don't, we didn't quite catch that.
The PWD engineering on the printing for that, it went from 220, $220 was actual in 2019, and it went to $6,066 through May of 2020. And I was looking at all the other accounts and it appears that printing has increased in almost all the departments. And I was just wondering why that, what the reason was for that.
We weren't budgeting enough. And then also, we're in a contract with Ray Morgan and we're able to track it better and put it to the correct departments. Often, it was just going to central services. And so just for the departments to conserve and use as less paper as possible because if we go over, we're charged more, it's hitting all the departments now. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Couple of things that I have is one, when we talk about this 40% loss of revenue, that 40% is actually sales tax or the total C-tax that's being estimated?
It's C-tax.
So 40% is the consolidated tax. So it's a portion of sales tax. But that's, I mean, we're projecting other losses and other revenue sources, but that's the big one, which was one-third of our revenue until this year.
Okay, and that consists of sales tax, property tax?
Not property tax. It's real property transfers, a little bit of sales tax, cigarette tax, liquor tax. No room tax, not in there. It's all by itself. Go to my cheat sheet because it's eight different taxes. But the big one is the portion that comes from sales tax.
Okay, and the C-tax then is, at least based on the diagrams you have, the pie charts, 22% of the total budget?
No, yes.
So we're talking, when we talk about this 40% loss of revenue, we're talking 40% of 22%?
No, it used to be like 33%. It's now down to 22% because we're only projecting 7 million rather than 12.
Okay, so that already reflects the decrease that you're anticipating?
Yes.
All right. The leases then have increased proportionally within the budget. It's now showing 37% of the budget?
Mm-hmm.
And we're not expecting decreases in those leases?
No, it's anything, hopefully more.
All right. Couple of other things with regard to the salaries. When we do talk about this 3% increase, some of that is within union negotiated contracts?
Yes.
Okay, do we know what percentage of the employees are represented by union contracts?
If it was earlier in the day, I could. I'd say it's over 50 that's union because a big part is police and fire. So it's, is that right by chance? It's a very small portion that's non-union negotiated. He'll know better.
Represented employees are about 90% of our workforce.
Okay, and under the current state of emergency, one of the directives does allow for changes to those contracts, is that correct?
You can suspend the contract under a state of emergency.
Okay, but when the state of emergency ends?
You snap right back to the full obligations under that contract.
All right. And then with whatever remaining employees there are, some of them may have contracts?
Yeah, the appointed have contracts. The other ones, in relative to their increases, were covered under previous resolutions. When the union salaries were determined over a five-year contract, when those contracts were brought through to resolution, similar resolutions for non-represented employees went through at that time too.
All right. And again, I sincerely hope that we don't get to the point because I know, you know, some folks are saying, you know, well, to save money, we should cut positions. That may, in my opinion, that makes the economic situation worse. Every person who doesn't have a job is a person who's not able to contribute to the economy. But what are the abilities of the city, whether through council or the city manager, to start eliminating positions? I know, for instance, there are restrictions on some of the police officer positions because it was paid for with what's called the more cops tax. But what other alternatives are there with regard to eliminating positions?
So in order to eliminate positions, obviously, most of the positions are protected under collective bargaining agreements. So there is a statute, there is a statute on their fiscal emergency that you would have to declare. And by doing that, then you are able to go in and do concessionary talks with the unions to be able to get concessions in order to be able to balance the budget. Typically, what is normally that occurs is that if you do, you know, you get to that portion, normally, any concessions that you get, you know, tends to be, generally speaking, at least the value of those concessions across the board. So it's not just the representative, but typically also the non-represented or your management and senior leadership would also take, you know, the same level of cuts, if you will, or at least the monetary value of that across the board. But typically, in this scenario, if we're still under a state of emergency, as you know, that's the suspension of the bargaining units could occur. Typically, you do that in order to manage the workforce so you're not tied to having to say to someone, oh, you know, here's your two-week notice, I'm changing your hours because, you know, all of a sudden now we have to shift folks around to be able to manage the city during this crisis. But it is correct that once the emergency, the COVID-19 emergency expires, then those contracts snap into place. The question becomes whether or not any of the economic items that were taken, if they snap back to the, you know, date of when you started or as of the date that no longer the economic or the emergency exists. But as you're aware, Mayor, already the governor has declared a fiscal state of emergency in order for him to be able to go into the rainy day fund to help shore up certain departments, you know, throughout the state government. So there is the ability to do that as we move forward. It's just a matter of identifying what those fiscal emergencies are and how do we right-size that budget as we move forward.
Okay, so I guess the point I'm getting at is what ability do we have if we were to continue to sustain loss of revenue to say, you know what, we're going to have to cut 5% of our labor force?
The way we do that is we declare fiscal emergency and then we put the unions on notice that we need to enter into concessionary talks. We determine what that amount is in order to be able to right-size the budget. Other things that we could do that don't necessarily equate to, you know, discussions or concessionary talks is that as positions become open, we can leave them open, which as you have seen earlier, that's one of the policies that we've instituted as of, back to March 15. Also, there's a number of temporary positions that we have in the city that will not be filled because some of those programs that those temporary positions assisted with are not coming back in time soon because of all of the issues dealing with social distancing and the like. I guess there's a question about whether or not furloughs, if there's no work, if we can furlough those positions without actually entering into contract negotiations or not?
My answer would be not.
Okay. With regard to the capital improvement projects, one thing that I'm troubled by when I look at that list is there are projects on there that were the result of policies from prior councils. There's a couple of examples of ones that I know this council has expressed no interest in pursuing, and yet they stay on the capital improvement project. And notwithstanding comments about, you know, how difficult it is to get something on there... And notwithstanding comments about, uh, you know, how difficult it is to get something on there because i-it's not all that difficult to get something on the capital improvement project list. Uh, we review it, uh, with regularity and things can be put back on there. Uh, the, the question is, how do we get something off the capital improvement project list if the council has already expressed, uh, a desire not to go forward with a particular project?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, if I'm understanding correctly, you're referring to the City Hall improvements?
Well, that's one.
Yeah. Oh, it's actually still in the very back, in the future years project.
But there's no funding for it?
There, yeah, there's no funding for it, but it's, I think what the mayor is saying is he doesn't want to see it in the book.
Yeah, you know, when the council says, "We don't want to go forward with a project", then the project should go away. Not, not just the funding for it, but the project should go away. If staff has a position that they believe we're making a mistake, uh, that there's something that must be done, then what I would suggest is that staff develop something to bring to council, uh, to change our minds. But what I don't want to see is things that we've said are not the policies of this existing sitting council, um, stay on the list.
Completely understand.
Okay. A-and there are projects on here that we've discussed in the past that have funding in future years, uh, that we've i-indicated in past workshops, not by resolution. So I guess that's what I'm asking too, is, is that what is required? Is to pass a resolution to get these things off the list?
I wouldn't think so. That, like, when we do our workshop in the fall, you say yea or nay to certain projects and that's how we keep them on or remove them. So I wouldn't think there's a resolu-resolution needed.
Well, I, uh, whatever we're trying is not working, so... I-I'm just trying to establish what it is we need to do, rather than when we say, uh, that we don't want something and it just stays there. It, it doesn't seem to matter what we say is what I'm getting at.
Perhaps what we can do, Mayor, is that, um, uh, as, during the workshops, if that's not an actionable item, that what we do is we bring back at the next council meeting uh, an item that, uh, the council as a whole can vote on. And that way we're taking direction from the council as a whole. Uh, cause if I have five individuals that are giving us five different directions, then it makes it a little difficult on staff to do.
And I do understand that and that's why at those previous meetings, I've asked if a motion was necessary and been told, "No, it's not necessary." So I-I'm just trying to get to what we need to do.
Sure.
To have the policies of this city council implemented.
I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that question.
So I, again, like I said, on the workshop, typically those are for discussion. Um, and, uh, I think that when we bring the, uh, the, uh, CIP in December, which is the tentative approval, uh, not the formal approval, is that, um, uh, that would be the best time to make sure that the staff has captured all of the council's, uh, policies, directions as they relate to the CIP.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I appreciate the explanation. That, that doesn't seem to work, so, uh, I, well, we'll have to look for another way to make that happen. And, and my concern is now, especially now, uh, that we're in a situation here. I, I don't care if it's two or three years out, if it's a project that the policy of the council is not to go forward with it, uh, there should be, it, it should not appear any longer. So I guess that's the point I'm trying to make. You know, whether you're putting money on it three years or five years down the road, if the statement, if the, uh, decision was not to go forward, then it needs to be removed. So that, that's one with the, the, uh, capital improvement projects. And Mr. City Manager, I do appreciate your position of putting these things off, uh, until I believe you said January 1 of 2021, is that correct?
Uh, uh, at least January 1. It'd be January. Typically January is when we give the council the mid-year budget review. I think this year, um, it was at the end of January, beginning of February. So whenever you get the mid-year budget review, uh, that's when we would look at, you know, where's our situation, inform the council and then decide, you know, what projects, if any, would go forward.
Okay. Um, with regard to that then, I'll be offering an amendment to, I believe it is Resolution 7109, uh, to put that into the effect of the resolution. Uh, again, I think we need to establish policies that we expect to have, uh, followed and that, that's the way I'm going to approach it. It'll certainly be up to the others on council whether to go that direction or not. Uh, but that would be my approach on it. Uh, because I have a concern with our budgeting. You know, we are fortunate, very fortunate, that we're in a situation where past practices were to leave an awful lot of money sitting in the ending fund balance with no real idea of what was gonna happen with it. So I do appreciate all the work that the finance department has done in normalizing. Uh, I don't know if that's the correct word. Um, correcting, well, transparency, that, that might be a word as well. Uh, again, I really appreciate the work that's been done to make this a much more professional-looking municipal budget where we know where money is, we know what it's supposed to be there for. And that gives us a better idea when we get into situations like this, that we're not just looking at each other going, "Well, what do we do now?" So again, I sincerely appreciate, and this isn't just this year. I know you all have been working on this, uh, for some time now to make these things happen. And, you know, that's where we're at today, is absolutely needing that type of transparency uh, to know what's in these funds and what's available to us.
I just want to clarify something. There is no resolution for the budget and the, uh, special projects. This resolution is, uh, 7109, that's for the budget augmentation, which doesn't have anything to do with the capital fund.
Okay, we do have a resolution though, do we not, on approving the budget?
There's, no. No, that's, that's typically not done. It's just by vote of the council that you accept the budget.
Well, then I can include that in my, in my motion then. Is that correct or not correct? Because again, I want to make absolutely sure.
Okay, it's not a firm resolution.
Yeah, I, I just want to make absolutely sure we don't get into a situation where the will of the council is being expressed and then we get some months down the road and it's like, "Oh, well, you know, you were just, I don't know, offering an opinion, chatting about something."
All right.
Okay. Um, again, going back to the capital improvement projects list too, you know, putting them on hold, I think, is certainly the wise thing to do at this point. Uh, we don't know what things are gonna look like. You know, we hear predictions, uh, some good, some bad. Uh, we may see a second wave of infections come this fall. You know, if you go back to the last pandemic, worldwide pandemic, the second wave was far worse than the first wave. So we don't know that and it doesn't seem that anyone that I've heard has answers to that. But I do think that as we look at these capital improvement projects, we really need to start prioritizing them. Um, the infrastructure of Boulder City has been ignored for a long time. Uh, our parks and recreation, we take a great deal of pride in. But when I look at those lists and I see the amount of money that's being put on the list for parks and recreation projects, uh, things like new tennis courts, uh, you know, those types of things, when we get into a situation like this with falling revenues, uh, is that really necessary? Whereas we may have other projects, uh, there may be improvements needed here at City Hall because of the age of this building. Uh, that seems to be much more important for a community that has not grown very much over the past 10 years, uh, than, uh, $400,000 for, uh, new tennis courts. We do have tennis courts available. The schools have just, uh, built new tennis courts as well. If we're not getting access to those courts, you know, let us know. And we can communicate with the, uh, elected people for the school district and see about a policy change on their behalf. So I think we need to be very careful about the parks and recreation projects that we have funded. I believe that Councilwoman Hoskins had mentioned earlier, you know, some of these projects on the golf courses, like the tree replacement, you know, that may have to wait, okay? I understand they would like to get rid of the cottonwoods, but, you know, there, there's always a foot wedge if you get behind a cottonwood. You know, you can always kick that ball out back into the fairway. So we need to be careful about that. Um, one of the questions that I had had the last time we did talk about the ver, uh, budgets for the various departments, there is a line item in there called professional services. Um, there are substantial amounts of money depending on which department we're looking at. And I'd asked for a breakdown of the, uh, costs that were involved in that and had not received it.
Actually.
Unless I missed something.
Yes, like May 12th, when we sent you the budget changes, it was included in there. So there is all the professional broken down by, um, each department what it was. It was in an email you should have received that had this. And then we have all the professional services listed out of what they are in each of the different teams.
Okay.
Um, I can send it to you?
Um, it's probably too late, but I appreciate you sending it and apologize for having overlooked it. Um, my point about a line item like that is, um, especially when we see substantial funds in there or substantial changes in those funds, uh, what's happening? You know, is it a catch-all? Is it, you know, someplace where you kind of put some extra dollars in there? Uh, I, I just, again, going back to the transparency thing, I think we need to be very careful about having catch-all line items like that that we don't have a view into as far as what they are. And I don't know where we are with the munis software right now as far as being able to, uh, look and get a breakdown of that.
Can you just type in professional and it'll tell you all the expenses for all the different departments?
Okay, can you do a, a sort on it where you pick a particular department and then look at that line item?
Yep, you can dig deeper.
All right. Okay, again, I, I think that's important not only for the council to understand, but also for the public to be aware that that system is out there and available to them.
Yeah, Socrata, yes.
Socrata is the software, yes, yeah. Okay. Um, you know, lastly, I'll, I'll say this too. You know, we, I was looking back at that schedule of meetings. Uh, we had a budget workshop on March 3rd.
That was pushed to March 11th because there was a conflict.
And, you know, March 11th, even if we look at that date, uh, what was happening March 11th? I think that might have been right about the date that MGM closed 10 resorts in Las Vegas. Certainly right around there because the order from Governor Cicilak came out, I believe, on school closures uh, on the 16th or the 18th, uh, one of those. So our next meeting, uh, next review of the budget was April 22nd.
March 20th.
March 20th was the stay-at-home or the school?
The governor ordered all non-essential businesses, businesses to close on March 20th.
Okay, I believe he had, uh, issued the school closure two days prior to the stay-at-home order. Um, but anyway, what I'm getting at is, you know, we've had two budget workshops and the situation has continued to change drastically. Uh, between the April 22nd and tonight, uh, we've still seen drastic changes in it. So I also want to compliment the staff, uh, on trying to keep up with all of this information. I realize that it changes very rapidly. Uh, predictions are changing, numbers are changing. Uh, that's difficult to stay up with. I do want to make clear to the public though, with the changes that are being made in these various reserve accounts, and I kind of hate to call them reserve accounts. I believe the term you've used is special accounts.
Yeah, special revenue accounts.
Okay, so they are dedicated to be the backups for certain things that could happen. And I, I think that that puts us in a much better place to be able to, as Mrs. Pelletier had said, we know unexpected things are going to happen. Uh, one of them's happening right now, a really big one's happening right now. So having that out there for us is a big help. And certainly having our, uh, land leases be, at least at this point, unaffected by what's happening elsewhere, uh, that also gives Boulder City a lot of stability uh, that some others are not. You know, I, I sit on a couple of other boards, uh, LVCVA, almost all of their revenues from room tax. Guess what? Okay, RTC, sales and fuel tax. You know, revenue sources like that are just heavily impacted whereas our lease revenue, uh, is relatively stable compared to other sources of income. So with that then, uh, since I'm being told we have no resolution, but we do have different items here, uh, on this particular item. Uh, A then is the public hearing, we have completed that. Uh, B is Resolution 7108, which is a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City, establishing classification titles and position ranges as required by City of Boulder City Municipal Code 1-5-5, approving part-time classification compensation increases and approving the full-time equivalent position count. Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7108?
Um, I move to, uh, to accept Resolution Number 7108.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Uh, we then move to approval of the final operating and capital budgets. I guess this is where I get to make my motion then. Uh, I will move for approval of the final operating and capital budgets uh, with the stipulation that there will be no capital improvement projects initiated prior to January 1 of 2021. Any additional funding for those must be approved by council and will be addressed at that time.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That also is unanimous. Uh, brings us to Resolution 7109, a resolution of the City Council of Boulder City augmenting the FY 2019-2020 budget for revenue and expenditures. And again, just by way of clarification then, this is in regard to our current fiscal year that will be ending at the end of June and for the revenue decreases that we've already encountered and the budget adjustments that have been made in regard to that.
No.
Darn, I thought I was getting close to having.
So it's not showing any expense reductions as we're all done internally. It's showing the funding for the five funds that were created this year and also moving $400,000 of the emergency capital reserve to the special projects fund so it can be used in case of emergency. And also it's $500,000 adding to this, um, public safety salary line just because their budgets are getting tight and just to make sure we don't go over.
Okay, is there any, anyone, uh, who has questions regarding that issue? Councilmember Hoskins, anything in particular on that specific issue?
No, thank you.
All right, anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7109?
Yeah, may I move to approve Resolution Number 7109?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That also is unanimous. Again, thank you, uh, to the staff. Uh, it's, it's been a ride the last couple of months. It's, it's been a ride the last couple of months. I'm sure that things will continue to change here. So thank you for all the efforts you're putting into this.
Thank you.
That will bring us to item number nine, matters pertaining to a lease agreement between City of Boulder City and Lendahand.
Good evening, Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. I'm going to introduce number nine, and then if you have any technical questions, I have my assistant here, Brock Armentraut, who can answer specific questions that I may not go that deep in understanding this. But you have two items before you, Resolution 7110, and that is resolution from City of Boulder City to lease city-owned land to Lendahand of Boulder City at or below the appraised value of property known as Cottage 3 at ABC Park located at 801 Adams Boulevard. And item B, which is a consideration of Bill Number 1874, this ordinance was introduced at the last council meeting, and it's an ordinance of the City of Boulder City approving Agreement Number 20-1876 between the City of Boulder City and Lendahand for rental of Cottage 3 at ABC Park located at 801 Adams Boulevard. So a little background information, Lendahand of Boulder City is a local nonprofit entity that provides services to the elderly, disabled persons, and other persons in need of mobility assistance. They are presently located at 400 Utah Street in the Episcopal Church Annex Building. Lendahand has outgrown the facility and is seeking an alternative location to operate. So they approached the city staff within the last year to inquire about possible locations within the community, and the city staff suggested Cottage 3 at ABC Park, although it requires extensive remodeling. We recommended that with the idea that because they are a nonprofit, they are eligible for grants through the Community Development Block Grant Program to fund necessary remodeling efforts. And due to the damage of the building, the rental value of the building was appraised at about $1,570 per month. And the city traditionally has authorized other nonprofit entities using city facilities to lease or otherwise use them at no cost because having an organization like Lendahand in the community is very good for the citizens and it's a good thing to have in, in the community. So the attached lease document has been prepared as a zero-cost lease with a 10-year lease option. And the reason why there's a 10-year lease option is because if Lendahand obtains the CDBG monies, they will have to maintain residence in that building for 10 years. So that's why we're having a 10-year agreement drawn up. So prior to the bill consideration, the City Council must make a formal determination that it is in the best interest of the city to lease the land to a nonprofit at either the appraised value, a reduced value, or for zero cost as determined by the City Council. The approved value from that resolution will be used for the actual lease upon approval of the lease. The staff recommendation is to lease the premises for $0 per year. So the Finance Department recommends that the City Council consider Resolution 7110 and Bill Number 1874, a lease between Boulder City and Lendahand for the use of Cottage 3 at ABC Park located at 801 Adams Boulevard. And I will try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have any questions. Obviously, this, this item has been a little bit of a long time coming. I'm glad to see we're finally here. With regards to Section A, the Resolution 7110, I absolutely believe it would be in our best interest to lease this building to Lendahand. I think especially at the, at the, below the appraised value when we look, I think it's $1,500 roughly that, what that appraised value would be. You know, we can look at it as, obviously, that could be money that could be coming into the city, or that could be money that's being spent into the, providing those services to the community that they provide to, which I think is of incredible benefit to the city. And so when I see, you know, could we theoretically take that money and then try and put it back? Perhaps. But I think it makes the most sense to put it in the hands where it is best, can best be spent. So for me, I am absolutely... ...in our best interest to lease it below the appraised value.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I too have to agree with that. And I also know that because they get grant money, oftentimes those grants do not cover administrative costs, that there's, I know from Emergency AIDS case that oftentimes it's either zero or very low, and I believe they have a part-time employee. I know I would miss them across the street. They're, they're wonderful neighbors. And I also have taken a tour of that facility and know they are in desperate need of someplace to store walkers other than in the bathroom. So I, I think this is fantastic, and I'm glad we finally are going to have an opportunity to vote on it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I used this facility during my husband's illness, and I know several other people who have, and they've been very, very helpful. So I totally support it. I'm glad that we're finally here at this point.
Thank you. I had asked during my briefing this afternoon a question about the NRS on this that allows us to lease property or have sale or other use of property by the city at less than the appraised value. When I looked at the NRS sections, the only type of nonprofit that qualifies for that treatment is a 501(c)(3). Anyone have an opportunity to confirm whether there are other 501 organizations that qualify for this?
I, I don't have that answer.
Stephen.
Okay.
I gave the answer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So with respect to your question, Mayor, certainly 501(c)(3)'s, as you mentioned, do qualify under the NRS and our charter. And it's my understanding that Lendahand is a 501(c)(3), therefore they would qualify. As to other entities that are of the 29 designation of tax-exempt entities, we are still looking into that. There appears to be some discrepancy there with, even within Nevada law where they identify the 501(c)(3) in the, the specific statute that you're referring to, but elsewhere that they refer to other nonprofits. So it's my intention to contact the Attorney General to get to the bottom of, of that question that you have, Mr. Mayor, but that should not affect this matter tonight.
Yeah, and I appreciate that because the wording that I saw in the statute only defined a 501(c)(3).
That's correct.
And then later in the statute, it does talk about just nonprofits. It doesn't use that. But earlier, it defines only a 501(c)(3) as a eligible nonprofit.
That's correct. And so it is my intent to seek the opinion of the Attorney General on that and how it relates to our charter, which is more inclusive with respect to nonprofits. So I will work on that and get that response to you as soon as possible.
Thank you. And I know, looking at the IRS, they identify 501(c)(3)'s as charitable organizations, whereas others such as a 501(c)(6), they define that as a business organization. So obviously, the tax law is the whole purpose of a nonprofit.
Correct.
So that you don't have to pay taxes if you qualify. But they're specific about how they treat different types of organizations.
Absolutely. So we'll work on that information and, and get you that for our future needs. The good news is, is tonight, we do have a 501(c)(3) in Lendahand, so.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. One other item on this building, you know, it was used at one time, I guess, for some training by the fire department, which didn't do the building much good on the interior. There had been talk previously about many of the buildings there at ABC Park, oh, they're old, let's, you know, just get rid of them, they have no use. You know, we don't have many of these. I think there might be one other building at ABC Park that is not used right now, the Old Boys and Girls Club, formerly used as that. You know, when we do identify things like that, I really think that organizations such as Lendahand, which has been here in Boulder City for decades, has provided service to so many people in this city, you know, they, they are eager, would be probably minimalizing their enthusiasm about this. This is going to help that organization quite a bit, and that in turn helps a lot of our seniors here in Boulder City, people who need help with, you know, getting the medical appointments, all types of services that they provide. So with that, any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion then for approval of Resolution 7110.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 7110.
Second.
I second.
All right, I think Councilmember Bridges was first at that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. And then do we need a separate vote then on Bill Number 1874? All right, entertain a motion on that.
I move to consider Bill Number 1874?
Consider.
I'm sorry, approve. I move to approve Bill Number 1874.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that's also unanimous and brings us to item number 10. And thank you, Mrs. Pelletier and all your staff for everything that got us here tonight. Chief Shay.
Good evening. Say I'm a little shaggy today. If this keeps up, I'm going to have to go back to my polyester leisure suits. Anyway, this is one of two presentations we do for the police department every year. This is concerning the Uniform Crime Report and some select activity breakdown. And I threw in a little bit of a chart, it didn't come out as well as I thought, that just shows how the police department's organized because not everyone understands how we're put together. And we're talking about crime stats and UCR stats and the people involved. For the most part, it's those people to the left and of the screen and the dispatchers. Those are the ones involved in almost all of this. This is a breakdown of the Uniform Crime Report stats for Boulder City since 2002. The Uniform Crime Report was established back in the 20s, and it was a mechanism designed to get information from all the states. It's a voluntary reporting system, not everybody participates. And it doesn't, though, capture everything the police does. And the definitions that are used for each of those categories are not the same as the state categories. So for example, a burglary in, in one state may not be a burglary in another state. So that's why they use these generic definitions, and they don't quite line up with your state reports that use the state laws. And for those of you who are around records divisions, know the differences between those, and it does get rather confusing. For example, homicide, in some states homicide is almost always illegal, but occasionally it is legal. Murder is always illegal. There's no such thing as justified murder, only justified homicide. And it goes on from there. So as you can see, Boulder City keeps pretty constant in, in their crime stats. And our burglaries do include in the state statute, vehicles, but in this statute, it does not. Vehicles are not included under the UCR. And these are what are called index crimes. Now, this system is changing. We're in the middle of the change, now we're one of the tests. And we're going into the incident-based reporting systems called NIBERS, National Incident-Based Reporting System. So we're going to go from these categories to 48 within 26 different groupings. So every jurisdiction across the country is going to see a spike, but it's proportional spike. So it's all the same for all of us. But the definitions, I mean, you know, you imagine we're using something from the 20s and things have changed quite a bit. But again, the ones in red, that's, those are 2019. This is an example of what we do and our activity outside of the 1927 stats. And what these are, are about 45 categories, is about half of what our events are in our CAD system. But this in today's policing is what takes up most of our time. In the old days, in the 20s, when the UCR was put in place, that's what took up most of the police time. Not anymore, things have changed significantly. And you can see that this, these are the activities that our officers are handling every day. What's difficult when you look at these is trying to understand what takes a lot of time, because time is what our people are here for, that's what they, that they use. So some events on the surface look pretty simple. They're very complicated and can take an entire shift. There are some that take every person we have, most of a shift. We bring in other people from the outside, other first responder types and other emergency personnel. So you could look up there and say, well, we had 55 suicide calls. Sometimes those can take, I've been on suicide calls that have lasted for 18, 19 hours and involve 20 to 30 officers. So it's very difficult when you look at these and say, well, that's not so much, but they all mean time. A death investigation can easily take two or three or four hours. And many calls involve more than one officer, many of them. I don't know if you have any questions about any of those. I did group some of ours together to try to, so I didn't have as many categories, otherwise it would be almost impossible to read or I have too many slides. But you can see where a lot of our activity is, a lot of traffic. The traffic stops that are, that are listed there aren't all tickets, of course, because our officers don't write tickets at every single stop. But they spend a lot of time on traffic. And you see parking has gone up quite a bit. We had 487 parking complaints last year. So when you take all these numbers and put them in there and you say, well, that's what happened in 365 days. And an average shift for us is a sergeant and three officers. So we have three, a sergeant and four assigned to a shift, and virtually on any given day, you got somebody gone. This is a chart that shows a comparison in total crimes per 100,000 for us, Nevada, and then the national. And you can see Boulder City, the crimes per 100,000 are pretty low. And that's a statistical number, it doesn't matter how many people your jurisdiction has, it's just a mathematical formula used, and it shows you where you sit with comparables all over. And we are about 89% or so safer than all the other jurisdictions within the United States. There's about 13,000 municipalities and over 3,000 sheriff's departments in the country that report through this system. We received this again this year from Security Barron. So you can see what our crime rate is, .57 violent crimes per 1,000 residents and 8.61. So our score was about 86.2, which is significantly less than all of our regional friends. I don't put that on the slide, but we're significantly below everybody else around us. So even though we're in the same regional area, our crime is extremely low. And the next city that comes close to us is Mesquite. And then the next one after that is Henderson, and that's on a statewide figure. And I threw this in here again, I did talk about this. This is ongoing. Our narcotics activity has actually picked up, and you'll get an update briefing on this a little bit later in the year. But for a city our size, for the folks that are working on this, and there's not very many of them, this is really a... many of them, this is really a significant amount of narcotics activity. And we are only going after sales and delivery. That's the only people we're targeting. And they've been doing, they've been doing a great job. I tell you, that's, they've made quite a difference. We've gotten some intelligence back that some of the dealers are avoiding us. They don't wanna be seen out here, because one of them used the words, you come to Boulder City, you disappear. You don't disappear, you just end up in CCDC. And that's all I had to present.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment in that, in looking at the crime types in that first figure, we have seen an increase in rape cases over the last five or six years. Do we have any data that points to why we're seeing that increase? Is it better reporting in that people are now reporting these incidences, whereas maybe they weren't before? Or why are we seeing an increase in that?
Yes. So you see ours are very low. You'll see five one year, four the next, maybe six. So, well, statistically, if you took a mathematical format, it's heavy, one or two cases aren't that much unless you're close to victim. But you're absolutely right. One of the things that's been happening in recent years is we're getting reports of cases that actually occurred some time ago and are now getting reported to us. And they've opened up the ability to investigate those cases. We can bring new things out because of DNA evidence, and some of that stuff's been stored away and is going through the, you remember, they were so far behind on rape kits and things like this. So that's it, there's increased reporting. Certainly, folks are reporting a lot more date rape type things. What we're very fortunate at is we don't have the kind of cases where the gal's jogging down the path and some guy leaps out of the bushes and drags her off in the side or between the houses or something. We don't have those violent type, fortunately, very fortunately. But the cases we do have are mostly kind of the date rape, they know each other kind of things, that's where they're coming from. But it is, people are more aware and they're reporting things that before never got reported.
Not that I'm happy to see this numbers increase, but I am happy to hear that people are reporting these issues, because that oftentimes is the reason why these things continue, is because they are not reported, and so...
I think the legal system has finally stopped prosecuting the victims.
Anyone else? Councilmember Boulder?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm over here nodding my head when she goes to say this, 'cause this is what I have a background in. I'm glad I don't have to prepare these anymore, though, I'll tell you that, because as you said before, you know, there is differences between state reporting and what this report shows. And so, yeah, finding out where that lies often is, was difficult in reporting these. But I just wanted to state, you know, that crime statistics, they really are a good resource in helping to identify where your crimes are, where your high, where are your high crimes, where are your high-risk offenders, your high-rate offenders, and your, maybe where your repeat victims are occurring. And so really tracking statistics can help with law enforcement. You know, this was barely just kind of starting when I was in the records. And I know a lot of, this is like a full-time job for some people now, where they look through the crime statistics, where they're happening, when they're happening. And kind of that helps move police to where, what shifts they need to be on, what areas they need to patrol more heavy. And that really helps problem-oriented policing and really get those hotspots that are happening. I'm glad to hear that there's a focus on our narcotics. And that's something that, when I moved into town, that was kind of a concern of a lot of people, that there's a lot of narcotics activities in Boulder City. And we don't have a lot of high-violence crimes, but we do have a lot of drug-related crimes in Boulder City. And, and just seeing that impact Boulder City children at a really young age. So I'm glad to see that we're doing a lot more. That's a hard one to do, because there's a lot of intelligence and undercover work that has to happen to really infiltrate that. And so I'm glad that's becoming a high priority to help move that out of our city. There is something about that buffer between us and the other, our regional neighbors, and I think that helps in the crime statistics that we see. But I just also know that, you know, Boulder City, they really look out for when other people report things, when they see something that's out of normal day-to-day, what they should be expecting. They look out for each other's neighbors. I know a neighborhood watch group was trying to get up and moving, I'm not sure where that's at, but if that could be moving forward again, I think that would also help reduce crime in our area. So anyway, I think that's the thing.
We'd much rather, we'd much rather go to call after call after call of the person on the street, you know, it's cousin Joe out of town checking on the house, than go in the next day and take in a report. We tell people, if anything doesn't look right to you, please call, because, you know, the cop driving down the street, he doesn't know what car belongs in the driveway, he doesn't know if this guy belongs in a neighborhood, really. I mean, it's, and we have to have what's called reasonable suspicion or probable cause to even stop and talk to him. So it really helps when a neighbor calls and says, hey, there's a guy walking down the street, doesn't, you know, I've never seen him, or it just doesn't look right. That's good enough for at least us to go and have a chat with him, which is sometimes all it takes. Usually burglars like to be sneaky, and they don't want anybody to see them, and once they know someone's seen them, they usually go somewhere else. And the freeway's a nice way to go, so.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to thank you for the report. It was very enlightening to know that we're safer than what I thought we were, and I can go to sleep tonight and not have to worry. But thank you so very much for the report. It was very, very nice to hear where we're at. And thank you for the police department. I've been, I've used them many, many times for different things, the past years here with the association, and they've always been very helpful.
Well, I wish I could take credit for it, but I gotta tell you, it's the men and women that work there, and believe me, I've worked all over for a long time, and I've never run into a group of people that cared as much about their community as these folks do. They really do. And even the ones that don't live here are pretty involved, and you'll find them coming here quite frequently, just, just to kind of be here. So they really do care, they care quite a bit about folks, and it's, for me, it's great to have a group of people like that. They, they're just like some agencies where you went to work, your shift ended, and you took off, and you really couldn't have cared less what happened.
Well, thank you for that report, and thank you for all of the people who work for you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I do have a question. Who's the guy on the horse?
Well, there's, there's two officers, and that's Scott Pastore and Guy Letke. And then there's some volunteers. They wear the light blue shirts, and they're from that Horseman's Association, and they volunteer their time, kind of like volunteers. And then we have two fellows who are going through reserve training right now, with the state and us, and they'll become reserves, and then they'll be able to augment it. They all own their own horses, they don't belong to the city, it's all their stuff. We don't, other than time, they're doing things all on their own.
He was clopping around town the other night, last night, or the night before?
They were doing, right now they're doing quadrants from the city out towards into the desert, and we're doing homeless service. It's really easy to do from the horseback, we can get in areas, and then we're cataloging all this and seeing what we're, if we've seen a uptick or a downtick since the COVID-19 started.
Thank you.
Again, Chief Shay, I appreciate, you know, looking at these numbers and seeing that, I mean, we'd love to see them go to zero, but we don't see necessarily large increases. But also, this is from last year, none of the numbers are yet from this year. You know, a concern that I've heard, you know, we've been staying at home quite a bit, and one of the unfortunate outcomes of that has been some increases in domestic battery. Have we seen much of a problem with that?
No, I've been asking the patrol sergeants about that, and we haven't seen any significant spikes in that at all. It's, you know, we get arguments, you saw them under family disturbance, so they will get calls. I think people are much better in calling when things get heated, before they go to the point where it's domestic violence and we have to take action. We've had a few, you know, saying we haven't. But I think people are getting better at it, and I think people are getting smarter. And as we all know, normally it's, the males are the more aggressive, and they've learned over the past decade that if things start getting hot, they better walk away, because if there's any physical violence at all, they're going with us. And, you know, it's, I just can't think of anything, you know, I look at the data, especially after the, Thursday through Sunday, or normally we have things like this, and I just haven't seen anything. And again, we have our normal cases, but what is significantly dropped are the late evening fights and street brawls and things like that.
Would that be because the bars have been closed?
Yeah, that can be part of it, and when the weather warms up, people stay outside more, and they have a tendency to drink outside or walk to the 7-Eleven store and things like that. So it's just, it's cyclic.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that, 'cause I know this has been an extremely stressful time on a lot of folks. So I'm glad people have found ways to work things out.
And I think our folks have really excelled at trying to find out alternative solutions, because one of the things, certainly, we're not immune to what goes on around us, is people are under an enormous amount of stress. There's people that don't know if they have a job they're gonna go back to, they don't know if they're gonna, you know, lose their income, lose their house, or whatever. So our guys have been, gals have been really good about calming things down and keeping people from adding to legal burden on top of everything else as much as they can. Of course, when the law mandates, you must do things, and of course, we have to.
Right. And the last item, you know, I had mentioned this to you in my briefing this afternoon, being able to get a webpage where these statistics will be displayed. I know I've had folks ask me, you know, why doesn't Boulder City have this when other jurisdictions in Clark County do? If you'd like to address that?
Right, we have a contract, and we've, you know, it's all in place. The company that was involved in doing this and working with the state when COVID-19 hit, we lost a lot of the links that they were working on with the Spelman system, which is a state system and all that. Now that that's all coming back online, the company is now back at work at this. I talked to our support services manager again today, she's gonna try to get another update from them in the morning, but they were hoping to have the project completely done within eight weeks, and that was at least a week or two ago. So again, it just depends on them being able to make the linkups with the state agencies and their own folks, and I forget where they're based out of, but the COVID-19 just slowed everything way down. So we have our GIS person working with them, so we've, we got everything in place. I was hoping to have this up quite a long time ago, so.
I know it'll be appreciated, and, you know, folks like to know what's going on in their neighborhoods, so.
Well, so's IT people, you know.
Can't trust them. All right, well, thank you very much, Chief, I appreciate it. That will bring us to item number 11, the city manager report. Honorable Baron, counsel, actually, this time we do have something to report, and I'm gonna ask the finance director to, to inform the council of the changes in the reporting.
Yes, it's me again. But this item is related to depreciation. We've talked about that quite a bit during the budget process, and depreciation is only applicable to the enterprise funds. And last year, I put in the background information when we did the budget earlier, that last year, when the auditors presented their audit report to the council, they did mention that we had omitted including depreciation in the budget, in last, in last year's budget. And when they brought that to our attention, we were committed to including it, of course, in next year's budget, but also, this is the form of amendment in the current year budget to put the depreciation line item in there. That's how it's done. It's not done the same as the general fund, there's no public hearing. We just add the line and we inform you at this meeting. So we've added depreciation to all the enterprise funds, and there has nothing been charged, and that will be a year-end adjustment that'll be made when we, when we close the books in about 35 days from now, really. And what'll happen is, it won't necessarily mean that all these funds will decrease by the amount of that depreciation, because there'll also be projects completed and those amounts added to the value of the enterprise fund. So it's, it'll be a net. But this is a once-year adjustment, it's not cash, it's just a, a reduction in the value of the utilities for the wear and tear on the assets. So that's what this is.
And you know how happy that makes me, that you've made the, not, not showing us an expense against revenue, so I do appreciate that. And again, it's an important thing, we need to know when things are aging, and also when we do capital improvement projects, that that brings the value back up as well.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hoskins? I'll take that as a no. Thank you again for that clarification, that will reduce the number of comments I get from a couple of people, so I appreciate that. That brings us to item number 12, which is public comment. Public comment during this period is for any issue. There is a limit of five minutes for each person, and we'd ask you to be concise and civil. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Again, we're in our final public comment period. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Again, we are in the final public comment period. The phone number to call is 702-589-9629. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Hoskins?
Yes, I'd like to report that I participated in a Zoom meeting with Workforce Connections. And we cleaned up some of the work we weren't able to accomplish during the shutdown. And that's about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, a couple of things. I attended the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition meeting today. And due to an ending, positive ending cash balance, there will be no cost to us for Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition through June of 2021 for anybody. They're, they're not going to be charging anything. We are still on the road of figuring out what we're doing. And having another workshop meeting in a couple of months. Secondly, it's really important that people get the word out that Emergency Aid has funds for, to help people with rent and mortgage specifically. They received money for, from FEMA. And they also received money through the CARES Act. So they're sufficiently funded for that. And they also have lots of food. And unless somebody else wants to make the announcement, it looks like Phase Two starts on Friday. Just got a, just got the email from that. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fuld?
Mayor, I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. A meeting I participated in, I keep using the term attended. We don't attend meetings anymore. We participate in them. But was with the Regional Transportation Commission. This is one of the agencies that, due to their funding, which is primarily based on sales tax and fuel tax, they are having to make some changes, some cuts. The transportation part, the bus service, is funded exclusively by sales tax. And that revenue had started to decrease actually a couple of years ago. They believe it was probably the result of ride sharing like Lyft and Uber. They started to see decreases, especially along the Las Vegas Strip, which was actually what helped support the entire system. So there was money that had been moved from road building into transit earlier. And with the decrease in sales tax revenue, we will probably see some cuts in bus service here in Boulder City. They have tried to alleviate that as much as possible. They are going to start a shuttle for people attending the community college. And from there, you would be able to take a connection down to downtown. But not all, but some of the routes that we currently have for what's called the Henderson Express, they will be eliminating those routes. RTC has told me that they will have people ride the buses and speak with all of the people who do regularly ride on that route to let them know what the changes are and how they might be able to work with the changes. But if it happens to be one of the times that that particular trip is being canceled, they're estimating it will take an additional 45 minutes if you were going all the way downtown on the Henderson Express. So they are trying to help out and make sure that the students can get there to the community college when they need to. And then allow for connections for any of the services that are being canceled. I did hear from someone today that there might be an impact on Silver Rider. I need to look into that because I had specifically asked about any impacts on the grants that go to lend a hand and Emergency Aid and was told there would be no impact on those. So I will look into that. But I do think it's indicative of our conversation tonight that, you know, we haven't seen the same type of stress on our budgets that a lot of people have seen on their personal budgets. But that time's coming for government as well. You know, as these payments start...